I confirm. That's what I needed to hear.
Why is mine noise?
Okay. Okay. Welcome, everyone. It's Monday, April twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. The clerk certified the meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code seven four dash two zero four.
Call roll, please.
Councilmember Heller.
Present.
Councilmember Jacobs. Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Join me. Next item is changes to the agenda. Council President Page.
Mister Mayor, I move to amend tonight's agenda to include the executive session for Agenda Item J. My motion contemplates new details that the city learned about after the agenda was posted. Those details include controversies not yet being litigated but likely imminent to be litigated.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Clerk call roll, please.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the consent agenda.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second. Got a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Next we go to special business, item F one. The denim day for sexual assault awareness month proclamation. And I have to find it. Just a second. Whereas the United States government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and the Women's and Children's Alliance, WCA, has declared April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three as denim day. And whereas both events are intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual assault remains a serious issue in our society. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day were also instituted to call attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault, and the problem that may be in society and the problems in society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of assault. And whereas every sixty-eight seconds, someone in America is sexually assaulted, and approximately one in six women are raped during their lifetime. And whereas with proper education on the matter, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing incidents this alarming and psychologically damaging crime. And whereas the City of Garden City is an important partner in the efforts of the WCA to educate about the true impact of rape and sexual assault. Now, therefore, I, John G. Evans, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Idaho, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three as denim day for denim day for Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Garden City, and encourage all citizens to speak out against sexual assault and support local efforts to provide help and healing to victims of these crimes dated this twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you, Dee. Our pleasure. Counsel, if you don't know, Dee Black is the director of the Women's and Children's Alliance of the City. So. And she graciously invites us in October out to the Idaho State Police Memorial. And we have an event there as well. So thank you for your work, Dee.
Well, we appreciate the thought raising the words.
This is already on our social media, so we're out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. Next item, monthly staff reports, counsel. These are in your packet. If you have specific questions that you want to address now, you can, or you're certainly welcome to call on the appropriate department head if you have a specific question to ask them. Okay. Next item on special business is an appeal hearing. Gary Abrams with Crown Castle is requesting that conditions of approval associated with planning and zoning, the mission conditions of approval of CUP FY two thousand and twenty-three dash zero 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 two, CUP FY two thousand and twenty-three dash zero 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 three, and planning officials' decision, DSR FY two thousand and twenty-three dash zero 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 one regarding a wireless facility located at eighty-two forty-seven West State Street. Bear with me just a minute. I have some procedural items I need to take care of here before we initiate the hearing. Is anyone, any member of the city council need to declare a conflict? And therefore unable to act on this item?
No.
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 Okay, thank you. The appeal, the appellant is appealing all conditions prior to issuance of building permit, conditions prior to or occupancy of site-specific requirements for the duration of the use at the address I cited just a minute ago. Elizabeth, I need help with your last name, Cockritz? Okay. Heckeritz. Do you have an issue with the transcript record? That was created with the planning zoning?
Yeah.
Okay. The standard of review. So you're reviewing, there's two appeal documents here. One is the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. One is the Design Review Consultant. The standard of review is to review those decisions. You shall review the record. This is the, this is the city council's obligation with due regard for the commission's decision. This item is being heard non-denovo tonight. The burden of proof shall be on the appellant. The order of the hearing will be, first, the appellant shall present the argument. Second, the respondent, in this case, would be Ms. Thornborough, will present an argument. And then the appellant shall have the final rebuttal argument opportunity. The city council is required to deliberate, provide deliberations, and produce an oral opinion. And move on a action regarding the specifics that will be articulated in the appeal. Counsel's options are to affirm, that is, agree with the planning and zoning and design review vacate, which is to cancel or render the planning and zoning commission null and void, reman, sending it back, or reverse, change the planning and zoning commission decision so that the decision of the commission is overturned. There are various items that we will get into later when you begin your deliberation on the findings you need to make specifically. So with that, you mind if I call you Elizabeth? Okay, thank you. Elizabeth, welcome. You can step up here to the podium.
Mister Mayor, pardon, order.
Yes.
Just a couple preliminary issues, and this Kekrits mentioned it, but one of which is the city did receive a letter from her law firm, Givens Personally, over the weekend or maybe Friday. And so I think one of the preliminary issues is whether the council is going to consider that second letter. I can tell the council, put on the record that I think this letter was in response to questions that staff and I were asking of Elizabeth late last week. So I think there's probably a good reason why this was submitted within the seven-day window. But I think that's going to preliminary issue that the council should decide before Elizabeth gives her presentation. Then the other comment, I wanted to say, well, there's a couple. There's also a PowerPoint. I think that her PowerPoint, we just received it today, but I think it's demonstrative or illustrative. I don't think that's submitting information. So I think it'd probably be fair for the council to consider her PowerPoint. Also, she's only considered, she's only representing AT&amp;T, so AT&amp;T's only appearing two of the three decisions. Regarding the third decision, I got an email from T-Mobile, and we should probably put it in the record, but I received an email from T-Mobile at four thirty this afternoon. T-Mobile is not pursuing this appeal because they are no longer wanting to add to this tower and when we send their application. So Miss Kekrits represents AT&amp;T. T-Mobile is withdrawing their application, and then we have the preliminary issues about arguably the late filings. Thank you.
Is the second letter that you received, it answers specific questions that were asked?
It does, Mister Mayor, and I provided it to council over the weekend.
Okay, that's okay. Counsel, you need to make a decision on whether you'll accept the letter. It's, this center over the weekend is part of your analysis. So that's, that's a yes or no?
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I'll take on good faith that the PowerPoint presentation is demonstrative and doesn't contain new evidence, and I would move that we allow that material to come in to today's appeal.
Second.
Request for appeal, brother.
Okay, round motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, I think you're good to go.
All right. Do you have it loaded up, or do I need to? Okay. Or just show me where it is? Oh, here you know, I'm taking it too. Or actually. My job. There we go. And then just. Thank you. All right, are you ready? All right. It's great to look at people through the glass. Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Heckeritz. I'm an attorney with Givens Personally at six oh one Bannock, and I'm here on behalf of our client AT&amp;T by and through their agent, Crown Castle. First, I want to say thank you for your time and attention to this matter, and we especially want to thank Charlie Waddams and the planning staff. This has been a lot of information and a lot of relatively complicated federal law and regulations that we've all been waiting through. Just as a little bit of background, these modifications to the wireless facility that we're going to be discussing today, they have been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. What we're really here just to discuss is whether or not some of the conditions associated with that approval are valid conditions under federal law, and if the Planning and Zoning Commission exceeded its authority in including those conditions. And we would say that, yes, those conditions, the ones we're going to discuss here, do exceed what's allowed under this very narrow exception to to the Federal Communications Act. So just to cite you, oh, that's on my notes. Got too many things open now. Just to cite you, we are located on the south side of State Street at eighty-two forty-seven West State Street. We'll zoom in a little bit here. Here you can see the actual tower and compound. It's tucked into the back of this property. We circled the actual antenna in red. You can see there's also closer to the front of the street. There is a utility pole with transformers located close to the front. That's what those canisters are. Plus, there's a second power pole and a line close to the front of the property along State Street. Here is the actual tower and the compound tucked into the back of the property. On the actual tower, you can see, we actually are not asking to extend the height at all. We've just been asked to extend, put some additional antennas on it. And then adjacent to that is the compound. It's a little blurry, but I just wanted, because it's from Google, Google Maps. But I just wanted to give you an idea of sort of what the flavor of these compounds look like. So AT&amp;T on this one, this is their site plan or half of their site plan. All they are proposing here is on the top of that picture is they're proposing to add a new generator, a cabinet to hold their transmission equipment, and the ice bridge. The generator is on a four-foot by nine-foot pad. That's the box in gray. It's an emergency generator. It only cycles once per month. The cabinet size is like a green sort of standard utility cabinet, and it's on an eight-by-ten concrete pad. It's directly beneath the generator. And then there's the ice bridge, which is the extension heading off to the right there. And that covers the cabling going from the tower to the compound. The tower, you can see here, there's just a little bit of blue on it. They're proposing to add an antenna and just sort of the ancillary-related ground equipment. I think it is important to note that this is AT&amp;T's first paray onto this particular site. They have no other installations on this tower. They have not been a party to any of the prior conditional use permits, and they are brand-new to this particular site. So the Spectrum Act was passed in two thousand and two, and it was a congressional decision that there were broad economic reasons for deploying 5G networks throughout the country. As part of that, Congress also noted that there were already numerous towers that had already previously been approved all across the country, and that there should be some sort of streamlined and economical way to expand the use of those previously approved towers in an effort to help the more rapid deployment of 5G networks. And so the, and so Congress provided a limited exception, which is considered called the Spectrum Act, for the approval of certain kinds of expansions to existing towers only. And I think it's important for you as decision-makers, especially in this limited capacity, to recognize that you still maintain really broad authority over the sighting of towers. It's just in this very limited sort of capacity where your authority is really limited by what the federal code says. So wireless facilities deployment, the code was, it's at forty-seven USC fourteen fifty-five. It was adopted, as I mentioned, in two thousand and twelve, and it says that a local government may not deny and shall approve any eligible facilities request for modification that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of an existing tower or base station. Here you can see that it's really a nondiscretionary approval if the modification does not substantially change the physical dimensions of the current tower or base station. Eligible facilities requests are also defined in the code, and that includes a request to modify a tower or a base station to co-locate new transmission equipment, which is exactly what AT&amp;T is asking to do here. So the law is actually pretty short. So the FCC adopted some CFR, some regulations interpreting this. And the real focus and where there've been multiple discussions back and forth is on subsection six of the definition to substantial change. A substantial change under the CFRs is a modification substantially changes the physical dimensions of an eligible support structure if it meets any of the following criteria. If it, the modification, does not comply with conditions associated with the citing approval of the eligible support structure or base station equipment. The focus here and where we've had more of our discussions is really on, the focus is not, is all on the modification itself. The focus is not on, is the site currently in compliance with its underlying conditions of approval? It's really, does this modification comply with the conditions of approval? And here, or not violate the conditions of approval? And here it does. All the proposed modification seeks to do is add a cabinet, an emergency generator, an antenna, and the ancillary equipment that goes with that. And that's it. This modification does not cause the site to come out of compliance. And I think that's a really key point. And so the modification is entirely consistent with the conditions associated with the eligible support structure and the base station equipment. The underlying conditions still exist, but what it comes down to is they can't be added to this kind of application and approval, because this is really, if you meet this code, if the modifications don't cause you to come out of compliance, it has to be approved as it is. Aesthetic-related conditions cannot be used to prevent modifications specifically allowed under the rules. And what is really at issue is there's been a lot of landscaping over the years that's not been kept up. And more recently, the city's updated its fencing code to not allow chain link fencing, and instead requesting that it be wooden flats. And so what the FCC has said in Rule twenty-seven-five, paragraph forty-two, is that these aesthetic-related conditions cannot be used to prevent modifications specifically allowed under the rules. And that's what this is really attempting to do by saying that the city won't approve the building permit on this until the whole overall site comes into compliance. And we believe that exceeds the city's jurisdiction under the FCC. Through this process, this one narrow Spectrum Act facilities process, the city just doesn't have the ability to engage in the full review of the site and associated conditions. This is more of a cursory check-the-box type of review. It's a nondiscretionary approval if the modification itself complies. These prior conditions still exist on the property, and they absolutely can be enforced by the city. There are complete CUP applications on this site. This is just not one of them, but the city does have, it's still, its regular enforcement mechanisms under the approved CUPs to ensure future compliance of this site. It's just not through this specific application. In fact, the city did in one of its two thousand and nineteen applications, it has recognized the nondiscretionary nature of this review process when it approved one of these eligible facilities requests without including all of these prior conditions. This is a checklist that was created by Crown Castle, and the language in this checklist has been cited favorably by the FCC where it says, it really focuses on, our whole focus is on this last criteria, does the modification violate conditions associated with the citing approval of the prior approval of the tower? And the modification does not violate any of these conditions. So finally, I just want to touch on the timeliness. I think that Mister Waddams is in large agreement with me. I'm sure he'll speak to it, though. But Idaho law is clear that due process requires a written order from which to appeal. Here, there was no written order, and staff's oral comments that this would be heard by the city council were then during the design review meeting. Those were later walked back in email. And quite simply, there was a whole bunch of communication back and forth between my client and city staff about when the order would be issued. Was this actually going to be heard in front of city council? Were they going to have it on a consent agenda? And they did not receive the orders until after the, significantly after the orders were dated. They did appeal these two orders within fifteen days as required by code. And so I do believe that due process and Lupa would require that these appeals be considered timely. So in conclusion, we are requesting approval of the applications. We are, the one thing you are allowed to include are conditions generally applicable to building structural, electrical, and safety codes and other similar safety laws. And we have no objection to those sort of terms. In the past, Crown Castle, who operates, manages essentially a lot of these towers, has come in. They've got no problem getting the building codes, making sure electric is fine, making sure that if there's a fire hydrant, that there's enough space around it. All those sorts of safety codes, they are absolutely fine. And that's what the general conditions of approval of the CUP of the design review approvals include. What we are requesting is that the application be approved with the landscaping, fencing, and those other similar categories of conditions be removed. The city does have a way to enforce them that does not fall, that does not violate the FCC and the Spectrum Act. And so really, we are asking you to approve, well, we're asking you to approve the applications just with these terms deleted. Because this is an eligible facilities request, as I mentioned, it must not be denied, and it shall be approved. I will stand for any questions.
Questions? You must have done a good job.
All right.
Okay, we'll hear from Ms. Thornborough, and then we'll have Miss Heckeritz come back up. Thank you.
All right, Mayor and members of the council, good evening. Thank you. And so to start off tonight, I'm going to just narrow the scope a little bit. As Miss Heckeritz.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry. Had mentioned that their initial appeal had requested to vacate all conditions of approval. And she had just noted that they're specifically looking at landscaping, fencing, and other items as such. Staff does want to point out that the initial appeal does request for all to be vacated, including the need for a building permit, et cetera, et cetera. And so hopefully she'll concur that that is not the intent tonight, as that's what I understood in, in her presentation. And then on the timeliness issue, staff has contended that it's, while muddy, While muddy, um, that a written decision document was provided on twelve sixteen of twenty two in its draft format. Um, and the city council provided final decision authorization to the commission. And then on twelve twenty one twenty two, the P and Z took action and formally adopted the draft decision in the affirmative. Um, and staff does concede that there was some confusing correspondence. Between one of the staff members and the development services department um that was not clarified until twelve twenty seven of twenty two. Um. With that being said, uh, it should be noted that the appellant has only paid for one appeal. And so uh should, there has been correspondence, I believe they're aware, but should both appeals be heard tonight? Uh, that, that that would need to be rectified. And then to the crux of the matter. Um, the sticking point, um, as you have already heard really is. Uh, that the appellant is arguing that no pre existing. Uh, conditions of approval should apply uh to this application. Um. And they're requesting that the city uh deal with the pre existing conditions uh through um. Nullifying essentially or code enforcement uh actions. Which should the city take those actions, the city does have. The ability to revoke a conditional use permit which would revoke uh uh the, the conditional use of. It permit if the conditions aren't adhered to. Um, staff would suggest that that would be much more difficult for the applicant because then they would need to reapply. Presumably for a conditional use permit and there may be things in current code that would certainly affect the ability. Um, for them to move forward and it would open the door. For the city to require a whole litany of new conditions of approval, uh, should they move forward with that. Um, moreover, the applicant during uh the, the, the decision process. Agreed that pre existing conditions were required and agreed to them. Um, and so the appellant is not meeting the grounds uh to reverse the planning and zoning commission decision. In that uh if you read through the transcript, there was an agreement that those pre existing conditions uh needed to be adhered to and they agreed to them. Clearback in two thousand three is when the cell tower or the wireless facility uh was constructed. Um, the initial solid tower, the first motion, if you read through the minutes. And the decision document was to deny the application due to its proximity to the residence. Residences that uh butt up adjacent to the cell tower location. In order to mitigate the effects of the tower, there was a subsequent motion uh for approval. Including the need to conceal the, the tower of with evergreens um as well as a dull finish. By two thousand five, um. The conditional use permit uh went into more detail of where that landscaping was. Uh, subsequent to that, there's been a myriad of different changes to the cell tower. Um, where through the records you can see that consistently landscaping, air irrigation and concealment of was required of the cell tower. Um, in twenty seventeen, there was a conditional use permit. Uh, that where the building permit plans clearly showed the row. A row of arbivida um at the rear of the property between where the cell tower is and the adjacent residential. Um, and we can only speculate what happened uh to those since then. Whether they died, were removed, et cetera. Um. As we've already heard, section sixty four oh nine uh provides six criteria. Um. To determine whether or not uh the city is preempted uh from requiring. Um, additional certain conditions that don't extend to the safety, so electrical building, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I'd like to pull up. On page one forty nine of your packet. Let me make sure I have the correct one. The six criteria are highlighted and this is in the FCC uh twenty fifteen uh rule. Um, which is essentially a document uh where the, the commission is discussing disputes between municipal. Uh municipalities and the wireless industries and how uh they've interpreted. Um, the, the Spectrum Act. And you can see here number six, the language states, and this was a document supplied by the applicant. Um, that. Um. You do not qualify or to, to be exempt unless you meet these six criterias and number six says. That the request does not comply with conditions associated with prior approval of construction or modification. Of the tower or base station unless the non compliance is due to the increased height width. In addition of cabinets or new excavation that does not exceed the corresponding substantial change threat thresholds. As identified above. And so what that means is that the, the order allows for certain heights. Or width of antennas or excavations that are not considered substantial changes. And this number six says that you have to comply with um previous approval conditions. Uh, to be considered for that unless those changes are made because of the increase of the height. The excavation, et cetera. Um, for that non substantial change and so that's not the, the issue here tonight. Um, the requested changes are not what's causing the change in the landscaping. Um. On page one fifty one of the packet. Is that showing correctly, did it change or do I need to reshare?
It did change.
Okay. Um, on page one fifty one of the packet or page nineteen of this document in the second column. Um, there's. Some criteria that set forth on how to determine whether or not um. How to interpret that number six. And it says, after consideration, the commission agrees with the municipal commenters. That a change is substantial if it violates any. Condition of approval of construction or modification imposed on the applicable wireless tower or base station. Unless the non compliance is due to an increase of height width cabinets. Or excavation that does not exceed the corresponding substantial change. In other words, modifications qualify for section sixty four oh nine A or that exemption. Only if they comply, for example, with conditions regarding fencing, access to the site, drainage, height or width increases. That exceeds the thresholds that the commission adopted and other conditions of approval placed on the underlying structure. This approach, the commission finds properly preserves municipal authority to determine which structures are appropriate for wireless use. And under what conditions and reflects one of the three key priorities identified by the IAC. In assessing the substantial change. And then the next paragraph, the commission is clear that sixty four oh nine A applies only to legal non conforming structures. Um, by not adhering to the conditions, the tower is no longer legal. There is a memorandum by the city attorney that cites a Montgomery case. Um, in that case. It's whether or not uh changes to um. Uh, uh, any changes would be considered of. Any changes to a cup would be considered substantial. And that particular case um had a condition noting that. Um, the tower could not be modified in the future. And so, um, that was stricken down because. Any changes to zoning uh could make structures non compo- non conforming in the future. And if you go down. Little bit further on that same page. Um, where it notes one hundred or right here. Um. And that, that's noting that any, any changes could not uh constitute and that's not uh what staff is arguing, staff is arguing. Uh, that the above is more applicable where there are pre existing conditions. Uh, very akin to fencing, site drainage, height, et cetera, including concealment um. Uh, components that are related uh to the vegetation. Um, also on the same page uh is already discussed. Uh, previously and agreed to by the, the appellant is that uh the FCC does not preempt. Um. Conditions regarding uh safety codes. Um, and so the general health and safety conditions. And Garden City Code is very clear. And that being non compliant uh with, with the conditions of approval. Uh, would render this uh structure not unlawful or not legally um compliant anymore. And so just to cite some of those uh code references, Garden City Code eight one A four. No person shall alter a structure unless conditions of approval are met. Garden City Code, non conforming uses may continue provided that the use remains lawful. Garden City Code eight six A thirteen, it shall be unlawful for any person for. Or property owner to occupy the property in com- in conflict or violation of this code. Eight two B one requires that every wireless facility have a conditional use permit. And, and has since the two thousand three application, the initial application for this tower. And then specifically, um, Garden City Code eight six B two C three. Notes that uh condi- conditions of a conditional use permit are attached to the permit. And the permit shall be granted to the applicant and successors in interest to the premises for which it was approved. And so. Whoever is responsible uh for those conditions. Um, being removed, that would be a civil issue between uh the applicant AT and T. And whoever removed uh those conditions, uh, this code is pretty clear. That the initial conditional use permit um is required to have those conditions of approval. And the applicant and its successors um are required to implement those conditions of approval. Um, certainly there could be a link to health and safety that uh the city council could identify. Um, however. Uh, arguably that's a moot point if uh the council agrees that number six uh is rendering the. That, that this is not an eligible facility request because it fails to meet that number six. Um. Um, but uh. There, there are linkages uh that uh certainly could be made to vis- visual discord as well as noise. You can hear that in the um or see that in the transcripts. Where the design review consultants were specifically asking about the noise generation adjacent or the, the generation of noise. For the generator uh adjacent to the residences. Um, as well as the going clear back to the initial approval in two thousand three with the visual discord uh for the adjacent residences. And finally, as you can read in the transcript, the applicant clearly agreed that the pre existing conditions needed to be complied with. Um, and you can see that on page one seventy one of the packet, starting on line ninety two. Um, and this is where Commissioner Brown had uh had asked if those pre existing conditions. Uh, would be adhered to and if you keep reading through uh the applicant then. Um, notes that. It's his understanding that pre existing conditions are required and that they would be adhered to. So to conclude, uh, the applicant is responsible for pre existing conditions regardless of the requested changes. Um, removal of all conditions. Um. Would pre, it would exceed federal preemptions, but I don't think that we're hearing that anymore tonight. Um, failure to comply with the conditions associated with. Um, the, the construction or modification of a tower of the base station. Nullifies the request from being an eligible facilities request. And could also nullify the legal non conforming status of the facility in its entirety. Um, and because the applicant agreed to the conditions. Uh, and they were made within the parameters of the statutory provisions, they're not in excess of authority, they're certainly not arbitrary. And they've been uh required for over twenty years at this point and so. The, the planning and zoning commission certainly did not uh exceed any authorities in their decision. And therefore the request does not meet the grounds for reversing, remanding or vacating the decision. If that I stand for any questions.
Hey, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Thornborough, I'm amazed, I just wanted. Kind of hear both things, I want to make, I want. Point of clarification, I guess, make sure I understood what I heard. So, um, I think Jenna, you mentioned that. They'd agree to the, the landscaping, the fencing years ago as, as part of the conditions. Um, like that. And then Elizabeth, I've, in her, she is, the way I understood it is kind of separating the two. The landscaping and the fencing versus the modification that you want currently, which is the floor cabinets. And the icebreaker, et cetera. What I want to clarify, what I want to make sure I understand is, is that. Um. There's not denying that the landscaping and that the fencing is out of compliance, they just want to separate the issues, so can the city? Say, okay, go after them from an enforcement perspective, say you need to put in landscape, you need to do the fencing because you agreed to it. And then separate this issue which is. Put in your tower, so I guess why do they need to be combined if? If we have an enforcement mechanism of non compliance. With the landscaping and the fencing that we can go after um for enforcement. Anyway, so that, did I understand that right?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, um. The reason that staff which suggests that you wouldn't want to do that is because um. And I, the, the application, the, the tower itself is a non conforming um use. Uh, as defined by code, as was defined in two thousand three within the initial application. And by the application not being in compliance right now. Um, code says that you cannot expand uh something that's not legally compliant. Uh, as a non conforming use and so that's the nexus of where they're, they're tied together versus a separate application. Um, uh, because. The request, the conditional use expansion request um assumes that the, the current conditional use is legally compliant. And by not having those conditions in place and being non compliant with those conditions, it's no longer legally compliant. The city also has mechanisms to enforce via code enforcement. But really with conditional use permits, the big stick is um. A revocation of the conditional use permit which could revoke the conditional use permit in its entirety. Um, should they not move forward and make those conditions compliant?
So is the concern on the city's perspective that? If we go ahead and prove it tonight and we try to enforce the fencing and the landscape, that they'll just blow us off and ignore it? Because we don't have that big stick of, well, your tower is not compliant if you don't do it, I mean, I guess. It seems to me a lost lot of work and time and money over landscaping and fencing if the city has. A mechanism of enforcement. I mean, I know what attorneys cost, I know exactly how much it costs to put plant trees. And we could have planted, we could have planted. Twice as many trees for what it's costing them to fight landscaping and fencing, so I just, I guess I, is there a reason, I'm confused why we shouldn't just separate them?
Um.
Unless that, unless there's a real concern that they won't comply if we ask them, I guess that would be a question for Gary, it's. Are you going to comply if we try to enforce the landscaping and the fence?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember. Um, Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, uh, so there, there are two, two questions. There are really, the first of which is, um, that code does say that, uh, a conditional use permit needs to be lawful to be expanded. So that, that would be why the city has requested that it become lawful again and implement the, the conditions of approval is required, uh, so that they can expand. But should the city want to utilize a code enforcement mechanism? Uh, certainly that could get much more, um, messy and expensive as you go to attorney, uh, fees. Uh, where code enforcement, uh, would then need to start establishing a case. And if they did not comply, then you would have that conditional use revocation process. And should the, the city, uh, revoke a conditional use where you have multiple wireless facilities utilizing one tower? I would suspect that that would be quite the, quite the case. And certainly, uh, several, uh, different entities would join in, not wanting to see that they weren't able to use their tower anymore. And also on, on the side of the tower, should they want the city to go that way and their conditional use is revoked? Then should they want to reestablish that, uh, tower, they would have to go through a new conditional use permit process and adhere to current codes. And that certainly could open the door. Um, I don't know if, if it would meet citing locations anymore. Um, and so they may not even be able to cite there. I don't know that one way or another. Um, and then certainly the, the code that would be applied at that point in time may be much more stringent than the trees uh, that are being requested, um, to bring it up to those two thousand three, two thousand five standards.
Welcome.
May I ask Mr. Wadham some other question?
Uh, sure.
So, uh, so I guess the question is, is if we revoke or vacate, then this continues on, I guess, further appeals of, I mean, from a time, energy, money perspective, from a city risk manager position, is the enforcement on, okay, let's try to enforce the siding and the landscaping after the fact, if we lose the big stick, the cup or battle this back and forth over landscaping? What's your opinion on that?
So, uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Jacobs, what was the question?
No. What cost benefit of, of trying to enforce the, the landscaping? If we approve the modification versus denying it and then having that big stick, because I would imagine they would appeal, the appeal, I guess. You know, several arch, there are a dozen trees, right? As, and so I just.
Well, Mayor and Councilmember, I'll try to answer that a couple of different ways. What, what's the cost benefit? I, I mean, um, the problem is there's not a lot of interpretation on the, uh, spectrum act, especially regarding, um, whether it's a substantial change regarding number six. And so when, uh, any party wants to go to court, he needs, uh, he need argument, which we've heard, he also needs legal authority. And I had just have not seen any legal authority that says that the city can, uh, deny, uh, or, you know, the, the city can require these conditions and, and it would be upheld in court. I just haven't seen that case law. Um, I've been looking for it. I've had multiple people looking for it. I've spent hours looking for it and, and I, it just does not exist. So if you're asking me if I felt co- confident going into court without any legal authority to support our position, uh, that would make me a little nervous.
Do you feel that we have a good standing to try to go after them on the, for, the enforcement side that, the, the, add the landscape and the siding? If we don't have the, that kind of cup to, to this point, we don't have that stick?
Well, Mayor and Councilmember, uh, when, when you say them, I, I don't know who the, the, them is.
Our castle.
Well, because they're, they're two different entities. So, as I understand it, you have a property owner that's not AT&T. You have, uh, an entity that wants the pole that is not AT&T and AT&T is just, that wants to be basically the tenant. And so we're trying to enforce conditions on a tenant that were imposed on another entity. And so, uh, could we enforce them on the property owner perhaps? Could we enforce them on who owns the pole perhaps? But AT&T is neither one of those entities, so.
And then one final question, has anybody complained about the lack of landscaping or, or about the appearance of the tower at all? Is it managed? They agreed to it, now have to play?
I, I have heard of nobody complaining about it based on my review of the record. And then in terms of going, you know, trying to enforce these things, one would be the conditions of the cut, the one. And the other thing that we look at sometimes is about pulling the certificate of occupancy. They don't, you know, I haven't heard any talk about this before, but.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And Councilmember Heller.
And then, and Miss Thornborough, um, was the initial, uh, permit awarded to the property owner or to, uh, let's see?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Heller, if my memory serves me correctly, I believe it was to Clearwire. And, and so code's very clear that it, the conditions of approval, um, are with the, the use. So in this instance, the wireless.
Say that again, I didn't hear you.
Uh, the conditions of approval run with the use and its successors. So in this instance, it would be the wireless facility use in its entirety and, and, um, so the applicant and its successors. And so in this instance, AT&T would be a successor.
Uh, what, does, does the, um, do the changes to the, uh, existing, uh, property a- as it exists now? Do those additions change the condition of the property in any way?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember.
In any su- significant way, substantial way?
The, the conditions, I, I may need some help with your question. I.
Well, I didn't ask it, I didn't ask it well. The addition of these, um, elements to the property won't affect the current state of landscaping, fencing, or other, other, uh, aesthetic issues. And I haven't heard an argument for they're affecting health or safety.
Um.
And is that, is that a correct observation?
And Mayor, Councilmember Heller, certainly the, the requested changes won't get into the landscaping area. Um, the, there, there could be an access, uh, to health and safety. For example, if you look at the transcripts, uh, where Mr. Hurd had talked about, um, noise buffering. He knows there's a bedroom window twenty-five feet away. Um, is that a health and safety issue if you have a generator that's popping on, um, while you're trying to sleep? Um, they may not be as clear as, um, a building permit or an electrical permit.
Yeah.
Um, but there, the initial consideration as well was visual discord um, in two thousand three. And, and if you look at the FCC order, uh, they specifically do call out, uh, the ability to conceal, um, a- as something that, uh, like stealth facilities, those are, um, towers that look like trees or whatnot. That, that's something that, uh, can't be touched as well, um, and, and for the concealment, um. Staff didn't go in to see if, uh, staff could find, I guess, case law on what constitutes health and safety
Yeah.
as it, uh, comes to cell towers. Um, and so the, the answer to that is, uh, there's an ambiguous, is visual discord, is concealment via, um, landscaping is noise, are those health and safety concerns? Again, that's, that's an unknown. Um, uh, staff had, uh, had noted that, uh, staff felt that the health and safety is only, it, the, uh, the requirement there is if you do find that, uh, this application meets all six of the criteria to be exempt. Uh, otherwise, that condition wouldn't be limited as it would be considered a substantial change.
Okay. So, so any change to that tower within the guidelines that don't, um, in- increase its size or, or the reach of, of, of the, um, don't have a direct bearing on visual discord or, um, a need to, uh, enhance concealment, as I understand the, the, the property?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Heller, uh, exactly. That's what that FCC order says that, um, should, should, um, you meet the substantial changes and, and negate one of the pre-existing conditions. Uh, that would be allowed if, if you're negating that original condition of approval because of something that would meet that change. And so an example would be their array of antennas, um, would, uh, exceed a size requirement or something in their original conditions of, of approval. And that kind of goes back to that Montgomery, uh, case that was cited. And then if you read through, uh, the FCC rule, um, they do talk about, uh, the fact that you can't preclude all changes. And so that's where that preemption is.
I, I guess that, that was, uh, where I was, where I was headed with the question. So the changes, um, uh, recommended or asked for, uh, I, I just don't see them affecting the property in any significant way, um, from its, from its current state, the current condition of, um, or absence of landscaping or, or fencing.
And, uh, Mayor, Councilmember Heller, that's correct, that the, the changes, uh, would not, uh, change the, the current state of what those original conditions would be.
Thank you. Further questions? Hey, seen none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Kekaritch, you got an opportunity to wrap it up?
Um, thank you very much. And those were some really good questions. To start off with the easy questions. Um, our office, I was unaware that we've only paid or the applicant has only paid for one appeal. We will absolutely, since we're here discussing too, we will make sure that the city gets paid on the second appeal. Um, so, just, and then also just briefly going into the timeliness and did the applicant previously agree to these conditions? Um, I think it's pretty clear when you actually read through that transcript where we were that the applicant, the representative at the time was like, well, I think this, but I don't really know. I'm not really an expert. I don't know. Like, there were a lot of caveats going along with that. Um, and I do think Mr. Waddams points that out in his, um, memo that in the interest of due process and all of the other issues going on here, especially the larger FCC preemption issues. I think that these absolutely are appropriately in front of you and there's something that should be considered at this time. Um, one of the questions was about noise, um, to the extent that we would consider, um, a noise ordinance, something being loud. The, that would be absolutely considered something that, well, at least we would consider there is of course no guidance, um, health, us, and health and safety sort of, um, code. So if, if Garden City does have a noise ordinance, and I did not check on this, we would comply with that. It's my understanding that this generator, because it does only turn on and cycle once a month for about fifteen to twenty minutes, that it's not particularly loud and it's not particularly disruptive. Um, but now to get into sort of more of the meat of the discussion is, one of the questions was about, is stating, is talking about how this is a legal non-conforming use, and that's why it requires a CUP for this approval. And that is absolutely what your, the city code says and why we are here requesting this CUP despite the fact that there's not a lot of wiggle room um, from the decision makers on what can be included in that. Um, because one of the concerns that the FCC had was that these, um, would get approved and then people would change, would they would only be allowed as conditional uses? They would, people would change the zoning surroundings, municipalities would change the zoning. And so all of a sudden, all of these would be, all the antennas across the country would be, um, legal non-conforming uses, which require CUP and to go through this whole rigmarole and the whole process. And the full, um, the full discussion and research and delving into, does it comply with this and does it comply with that? And what about this? And what about fencing? And what about setbacks and this and that and whatever? And so the reason they came up, a large purpose behind the Spectrum Act was to streamline that process and to say, it's already been approved, whether it's a non-conforming, legal non-conforming, however it originally got cited, if it's been originally cited and approved by a municipality or jurisdiction governing body, it's okay, and we're gonna let, it makes sense to add things on to this. Instead of going and building more towers and taking up more space, we're just gonna add AT&T onto this one. We're gonna let T-Mobile come onto this one and we're gonna make it fast and we're gonna make it streamlined. And so that was really a big part of the policy behind this. Um, when the FCC was considering, um, these different rules. Jenna, she absolutely cites correctly how to the various sections of the code that she had pulled up um, and to the commentators. However, again, going back to the sentence that she read, um, which I don't know if I have access to all of that or not. It was on page one fifty-one of the packet. It says, I agree, after consideration, the commission agrees with municipal commenters, the change is substantial if the change, if this modification violates any of the conditions of approval. And Councilmember Jacobs and Councilmember Heller, I think that's exactly what you were getting at. This particular change does not violate any of the conditions of approval. It's out there. It is how it is. The site is currently not in compliance. Um, I mean, you can look at it. There is not a bunch of trees there right now. Those issues can all be addressed, but not through this particular application. This application is this very limited review of, does the modification um, violate any of the conditions? And the modification is just the generator. It's the additional antenna and it's the extra cabinet. That's it. And none of that violates the change of conditions. The prior conditions. Questions?
Okay, further questions, Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kekaritch, for your, uh, initial presentation and for the follow-up. Uh, I feel well informed. I have a couple of questions. Um, I guess first, um, is it your opinion or your position that, uh, Mr. Abraham's misspoke? Um, I'm looking at page one seventy-one of the packet, beginning line one oh nine, when he talked about predecessors and of, in interest, um, and agreements of conditions. Is that a, is that a, in your analysis, is that a misstatement?
Let me skip to that page. So which line are you looking at? I apologize.
Yeah, generally beginning at one oh nine. Guess, uh, the meat of this around one seventeen?
And again, my understanding of sixty-four oh nine is these are two, two completely different things. Is that the original conditions from the CUP, which we're not complied with, with compliance can be enforced, but they're not new conditions per se. And so in going through the conditions, I do believe that he, um, misspoke because then through the rest of this, um, he does caveat it and says, um, I'm not a sixty-four oh nine expert. I can't stipulate in terms of timing. That's my understanding from Hannah, from the way the city is approaching it. I mean, I think it was really kind of an all over the place.
Yeah, and that's, and that was my interpretation as well, is, um, maybe, maybe the gentleman was a little bit on the spot and didn't want to misspeak. Um, can I ask you, in your opinion, uh, does anything in the Spectrum Act, uh, relieve predecessors in the interest from complying with the terms of their original agreement?
To my knowledge, it comes to member page, to my knowledge, there is not. And in fact, this, um, at this point, I know that T-Mobile is on this. Um, Verizon is on this and AT&T is now a new user on this poll and various, I believe it was T-Mobile. this and AT&T is now a new user on this poll and various, I believe it was T-Mobile operating through whoever they originally were back in two thousand and three that still owns the poll, but I do not speak for certainty on that fact.
Thank you. I, I, as a, as a general policy position, I, I understand that, uh, lawyers need to get paid, um, and I appreciate that as much as any other lawyer in this room. Uh, but it seems to me that there's a, an easier resolution to this problem. Um, and I, I guess it seems like reasonable minds should, should have arrived there by now. I, um, wonderful presentation, thank you. Um, and that's just my comment.
Okay. Anything further?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Kind of just to follow on with James. Um, I'm a little baffled why they just haven't taken care of the problem, right? Why they, why they feel they need to separate it? Like I said, I, I know what attorneys cost and I know exactly how much it costs to put entries, because that's my business. And it's like, really, and as a business owner, I would like, why? So can you just explain to me why they're so adamant about not just taking care, not being into compliance with something they agreed to years ago and just paying that money? It's less than probably what they're paying to fight this and just getting it done? I mean, I don't understand.
Yeah. So Councilmember Jacobs, I only represent AT&T. And AT&T is new to this antenna and new to this poll. They, this is their very first, they do not have a prior condition of approval, um, they do not have any of these other sort of issue, they do not have any of these other prior orders. This was the first time this had come out to them. And further, looking at it more from AT&T's perspective, is they have multiple, um, towers or they're cited on, I would have no idea, hundreds of thousands probably of towers throughout the country. And from their perspective, if one jurisdiction is exceeding these bounds, then another one does and all of a sudden they're fighting and battling everywhere.
Slippery slope, right?
It is a slippery slope that they don't want to go.
I, I guess that my understanding is that you're representing Hard Castle and AT&T.
I.
Hard Castle owns the tower. And so maybe that's incorrect on my part.
I am only representing AT&T. Crown Castle also does not own the tower, they're the operator of it. They have a lease somehow as an operator, but for these purposes, we gen, I speak regularly to Crown Castle, um, but they are not the client, the client is AT&T.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Kekaritch, um, are you, um, authorized to speak, um, really, uh, about what your client might do? And this is a little bit speculation here, if, um, if we were to approve the application with the condition that the, let's see, the operator come into compliance?
Um, I don't know what they would do. Um, I know that the two thousand and three CUP is with the owner, I believe it is with the owner of the actual tower. The two thousand and five one is with the owner of the property and much of that has nothing to do with the actual site and how the FCC rules are, at least as of today, that most of that is not going to, the things that were approved through the two thousand and five that had to do with the auto body or the, that business, um, you're likely not going to get a wireless carrier, um, or they're gonna fight you on it. I don't, and I don't know where that fall, I've not looked at the retroactivity and those sort of laws and where things stand now. Um, I don't know. And I can't speak to that.
Thank you.
Hey, anything further? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Council, the matter is properly before you now. Um, again, uh, you, there are, uh, four options, uh, firm, vacate, remand or reverse. Uh, a firm would be you agree with the planning and zoning commission. Uh, is this planning and zoning this one or design review, AT&T? Uh, the design review committee. Uh, vacate would be council or under the plan or the design review committee decision null and void, remand would be to send it back. Reverse would be to change, uh, the decision so that the decision is overturned. Um, so we're in the deliberative stage. Uh, council members, you're free to, uh, to discuss this. If you have further questions, I would allow, uh, either Ms. Thornborough, uh, or, uh, Ms. Kekaritch, uh, to be recalled if you need to. Uh, so, Council President, I'll let you kick it off.
Great, council members, um, in this deliberative matter, uh, I'm just gonna show my, my hand here. I, um, uh, understanding that the standard is deference to the decision body of the design review in this case for this matter, I do believe that the appellants met the burden required. Uh, and at this moment, my, uh, my decision would be to, or my vote would be to, uh, reverse the design review decision and, uh, look within the, um, authority that our enforcement team has to pursue any violations of code.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I agree with, uh, uh, Council President Page. Um, and I have the greatest respect for the design review committee and the Thornborough's office, but, um, I, I think, um, the appellate has, uh, made the case and made a strong case for reversing the decision.
Any further discussion?
Oh, I was, you know, I would agree too. I think, given that it's strictly AT&T, it's, it was just trying to add four cabinets onto the pole and not really part of the broader deal, I, I kind of voice James's uh, opinion that this probably didn't need to go this far and this much time and this much energy and this much spent on, on something like this, uh, for landscaping that hopefully we can enforce in some other way. Um, and, and so I think we move on and, and go about that same route.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I would move that we reverse the design review decision in this matter.
Second. They've got a motion in a second as part of discussion. Uh, if you'll allow me, Council President. Of course, we want to drill down, um, on, um, you mentioned that the appellant met the burden of proof. Um, uh, is the basis for the motion that the city doesn't have the authority to, to, uh, impose the conditions that are being appealed? Um, I'm trying to, Charlie, we gotta get to something because basically after your decision, oral decision here tonight, our staff is going to have to, and in this case it'll be, uh, um, staff's gonna have to, uh, codify this in writing and bring it back for your acceptance at our next meeting. So, um.
Um, yeah, so I, I would, I would point to the, um, a, a balance recitation of the Spectrum Act and, uh, the authority given, uh, in the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Fourth Circuit, uh, Montgomery City, uh, versus the FCC. I think that's a, the clear guideline and, and a roadmap of what we might expect.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Yes, sure.
What I think I'm hearing is that, uh, the council is considering, uh, that the, that the approval should be, uh, that the application should be approved, but striking those two conditions regarding fencing and landscaping. So if that's where the council's headed, I think that would be, uh, to affirm planning and zoning and design review, affirm the, uh, approval, but then vacate and reverse those two conditions. That's what it sounds like to me. And then in terms of a legal basis for that, it sounds like perhaps that the council's determining that the planning and zoning commission and/or the design review consultant incorrectly interpreted the codes and statutes that are, so, and did I get that completely wrong?
I think, uh, incorrectly interpreting might, might not be my choice of words. Um, I think their interpretation is fine. I, I just think the consequences of that decision are more than this city should take on from a risk management perspective. I don't think that's in the city's best interest.
So Mayor and Council President, then another basis for changing the conditions is that, um, let's see, the Garden City Code, uh, there's a better form of construction that should have been applied, uh, getting closer.
Well done.
Okay. There's a equally good or better form of construction that should have been, and, and that wording comes out of, um, Idaho administrative procedures. Right there.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with, uh, Mr. Waters.
And now assistant. Okay, I've got a motion in a second on the floor with a discussion. Um, I might recommend that we withdraw the motion, uh, and take another stab at it.
Mr. Mayor, I will withdraw the motion.
Agreed. Okay, thank you. Um. Council President Page?
Will they make another motion, Mr. Mayor? Uh, I move that we reverse the design review decision, uh, and, um, grant the application, or grant the approval, dropping the, the prior required conditions of approval of landscaping and fencing.
A motion in a second. Is the motion clear enough, Mr. Waters?
It is, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? And on the clerk call roll?
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay. Everybody good to go or we need to stop for a minute? Thank you.
Thank you.
Since you gave me permission, Elizabeth, thank you. Okay, we'll move on then. Uh, item G one, uh, this is a, uh, noted stuff as a public hearing, uh, for CPA-FY twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 six. This is regarding the parking regulation. Uh, I think I had indicated that, uh, you'll see that we have a first reading, uh, following this particular issue. I'd like to defer the public hearing until the next meeting. I think it's an important enough issue that we should have a full council present, um, when we have the public hearing. Um, so, uh, my request is, uh, that we, uh, continue, it's in the, it's in the agenda, but that I think we ought to have a motion to continue the public hearing on this until a date certain of five eight twenty twenty-three. And then we can address the first reading, uh, following that, but, uh, the public hearing would be held, uh, in conjunction with the second reading of the parking ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I move that, uh, we hold the public testimony, public hearing open to a date certain, May eighth, twenty twenty-three, uh, at which time we'll also do a second reading and, uh, and, uh, do you want these in two separate motions?
Yes. Okay, I've got a motion, do I have a second to continue the public hearing portion to five eight twenty-three? Okay, I've got a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. We'll now move down to item G two, this is a first reading of ordinance ten thirty-four dash twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Item G two?
I'm sorry, what did I say? G two, yes.
Sorry, I'm looking at it, I'm looking at last meetings at, G two is not, uh, okay, excuse me, let me get on the right meeting.
I need a motion, uh, for a first reading of ordinance ten thirty-four dash twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we have our first reading of ordinance ten thirty-four dash twenty-two.
By title only.
By title only.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk call roll?
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
First reading ordinance ten thirty-four dash twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending or repealing Garden City Code, Title five, traffic, chapter one, traffic code, section four, stopping, standing or parking, chapter nine permits, title eight, development code, chapter one, general regulations, article C, property maintenance provisions, section three, property maintenance standards, chapter two, base zoning district regulations, article B, base zoning district provisions, section two, allowed uses, repealing chapter three, overlay zoning district regulations, article D, neighborhood commercial node, section three, general provisions, subsection C, parking, amending chapter four, design and development regulations, article D, parking and off-street loading provisions, section one, purpose, section two, applicability, section three, parking design and improvement standards, section four, parking use standards, section five, required number of off-street parking spaces, section six, standard for alternatives to onsite parking, section seven, off-street loading standards, adding section eight, parking district, amending chapter six, administration, article B, specific provisions, section eight, minor planned unit development, subsection D, general provisions for the site layout template, and amending chapter seven, references, article A, definition, section two, definition of terms, repealing all ordinances or parts thereof to the extent they conflict with this ordinance, providing all other ordinances included in the official code are still in effect, notwithstanding some provisions thereof being eliminated, repealing any other ordinance, creating or regulating parking, providing for separability, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a third reading, uh, of ordinance ten thirty-six twenty-three. Um, this has to do with our utility cleanup, language cleanup, um, after which we would need a motion to adopt and publish.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move for a third reading of ordinance ten thirty-six dash twenty-three by title only.
Second. A motion in a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll?
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Third reading ordinance ten thirty-six dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Garden City Code Title four, public health and safety, chapter two, municipal refuse collection, section two, definition, section three, collection service provided, use mandatory, section four, rules and regulations, section five, sanitation service fees, section seven, containers, section eight, storing, eliminating, refuge, and section nine, prohibited acts declared, eliminating section eleven appeals and section twelve violations, amending language, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Uh, need a motion to adopt and publish ordinance ten thirty-six dash twenty-three.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt and publish ordinance ten thirty-six twenty-three.
Had a motion in a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll?
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, that concludes the public portion of our meeting tonight. We do need to move into executive session, uh, after which we will adjourn. Uh, no decisions will be made in that, uh, session, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we move to executive session to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency, discuss the legal ramifications and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated. Uh, and, uh, after which the meeting will adjourn without a decision being made.
Second. A motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk call roll?
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Thank you.